Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30, and I'd like to call to order the Board of Library Trustees, Willmet Public Library District Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 19, 2024, and it is 6:30, as I said. We'll now have a roll call, please. Secretary DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Please. Thank you.
Yes, Trustee DiLorenzo is present. Trustee Cox?
Here.
Trustee Nealon?
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Here.
Trustee Senate?
Here.
Trustee Summer?
Here.
Trustee Fishman?
Here. Thank you. And it's now in our agenda time for public comment. Meeting attendees who have signed the Visitor Public Comment Registration Form and who would like to address the WPLD Board of Trustees may do so here. Anyone? All right. Now, we'll move on to the review of the October 15, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Draft Minutes. And that was in our attachments. Any additions or corrections to the October 15, 2024 minutes?
I did not see anything that needed to be corrected.
Excellent, thank you. May we have a motion, then, please, to approve?
I move approval of the October 15, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
A second? I'm sorry, Trustee Senate, thank you. So, the motion has been brought forward by Trustee Summer and approved by Trustee Senate. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed. Now, we'll go on to presentations, but I don't believe we have any, so we'll move forward to the Treasurers Report. Trustee Summer, please.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Can you hear me back there? Great. In October, we received approximately 136,000 in property taxes. At the end of October, in the general fund, we have received more than 100% of the budgeted amount for interest income for the total received of 154,468 as of the end of the month, and the budget was 150,000. There is a small typo on the first page of the notes to the financial statement. The total property taxes received is actually 135,803. It says 136. It's just a small typo. In reviewing the general fund expenses, you'll note that the building maintenance account, 76,300, is at 82% of the budget. In July, we paid the first invoice to Hill for the subpump replacement in an amount of 16,368, and we debited it from the Special Reserve Fund. The second related invoice, also for 16,368, was debited from the general fund in line 76,300 in September. We're going to reclassify that second invoice to the Special Reserve Fund as well as the associated maintenance and labor invoice from July for 7,747, which was also paid from this general fund. This would move approximately 24,000 from the general fund to the Special Reserve Fund. The subpump replacement was budgeted as a capital outlay in the Special Reserve Fund plan from a number of years ago. Oh, that was going to, it's shown in 2027, and it needs to be moved up to 2025 due to the premature failure of the system. Does anybody have any questions on that? Does it kind of make sense? It was in, okay. There were several checks this month for the new computer project to ComputerView and HP Inc., which were properly classified as Special Reserve Fund expenditures. And there was one check to Enberg for their work on the space needs assessment in the amount of $2,835. There are a number of CDs coming due in December to the Special Reserve Fund, and given that the renovation project doesn't appear imminent for the foreseeable future, we're going to reinvest these and take advantage of the higher CD rates. Does anybody have any questions on anything that I didn't cover? Checks? Anything? Yes.
What's the term that you're going to reinvest in? How many months, you know? Or just got any thoughts?
For the CDs, we haven't even seen what the CDs are at this point, so it'll depend upon what the rates are relative to that. We typically do a year or two.
Because with the latter, we have some that are continually maturing over the next few months that we'll continue to roll, so we'll always have it available. Good question.
Good question.
Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to move and approve the bills and salaries?
I move approval of the bills and salaries check detail for October 2024 as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay. The motion to approve the bills and salaries detail for October 2024 was presented by Trustee DiLorenzo and seconded by Trustee O'Keefe. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed to approve the bills and salaries for check detail for October 24, 2024 as presented. Thank you. Moving on, we now go to our action items, which we have a number of them this evening. So, the first one is, "In compliance with the Decennial Local Government Efficiency Committee, to convene and review, to review and approve the final report for compliance with the Local Government Efficiency Act." And we now have, would you like to speak to that?
Certainly, I can speak to that. I'd like to invite our resident member of the committee to the table. Eric Beederman, would you like to join us, please? And Linnae is going to bring a microphone so that you can speak with us as well. As a matter of introduction, I'll just provide some context about the report that you see in the packet. This is a statutory requirement, and so we are submitting this report in compliance with ILCS 70-1. The Decennial Local Government Efficiency Committee has completed its review of Willmet Public Library's operations and its partnerships with an eye towards extending overall value to the organization and to its constituents. The final report for compliance with the Local Government Efficiency Act is included in the packet for your review, and upon review, and upon approval, will be filed with the county and archived with our budget and planning documents on our website until the next such report is filed in the future. And since it's a decennial report, we'll expect that activity in 10 years. So, where we're at this year on this project, there is a timeline that's listed on the report, so we convened this committee back in June of '23, and we've had some review of the material in the time since, but the majority of the action and compilation of the report really has taken place this season. And so, in late October, I met with our resident committee members, Eric Beederman and Linda Dykman, to review the content of the report and collect their feedback on the process. And as part of that meeting, and to summarize the report here this evening, I'm going to share with you a few notes. So, just by point of introduction and overview of the report, Willmet Public Library meets or exceeds all standards for public library services as established by the State Library and the Illinois Library Association. The library has been nationally recognized in each of the past four years by Library Journal as a five-star library, placing it in the top 10 public libraries in the nation for its per capita outputs or its budget category. The library maintains multiple intergovernmental agreements to extend value to its constituents, including partnerships with Kenneworth Public Library District, of which I serve as the administrator, the Reaching Across Illinois Library System Rails, the Cooperative Computer Services Consortium, which provides our catalog and for which I serve as the treasurer on their executive board, the Electronic Content Consortium, of which our digital maker services manager, Lauren Kelly, serves on the executive board and from which we receive our overdrive services, our insurance partners like Wellness Insurance Network, which provides the health insurance for staff, the Libraries of Illinois Risk Agency, which provides our workers' compensation and property insurance that we'll talk about later on the agenda, and programming partners like Illinois Libraries Presents, the Family Action Network, as well as various partners that we have in the local government, including the Village Schools and Park District. The library also maintains dozens of community partnerships ranging from preschools and not-for-profit organizations to programming partners and other local businesses. The report details the materials that we reviewed to better understand the library's scope and our role, our statutory precedents and obligations, the ways that we demonstrate transparency, and how we model and uphold our ethical work. The report summarizes what the library has done well, ranging from conservative tax levies and increased accountability to achieving economies of scale through leveraged partnerships and effective management of resources to accomplish maintenance and improvement projects without referendum. The report also outlines how we can improve or continue to build upon our progress, including efforts to reduce duplication of services and share efficiencies with our other partners and local government to make organizational materials more easily findable on our website. In terms of the inefficiencies that were presented by the report, it's just an inherent nature of the way that libraries are structured in the state of Illinois, that they're oriented towards serving their local communities and less so in serving at the state level. If libraries were funded by the state, we would have a different level of efficiency that we could extend to our constituents, but because we're all serving independent districts or individual communities, there are certain units of government need to be structured in certain ways to meet those standards. That is kind of the broad overview of the content that is contained in the report, and I would turn it over to the board and our resident member for any feedback, observations that you would like to share about the report this evening.
I don't have anything else to say. I think that it's a good report. I think that it succinctly summarizes how the library works related to its efficiency operationally, financially, and governmentally. So, I think it's a very good report, and I think that it gives anybody who cares to research it an understanding of the efficiency.
I'm kind of curious how much time you spent, because you had several meetings and I'm sure you did a lot of material.
Well, the meetings towards the end were a lot longer than the meetings in the beginning. The ones in the beginning were sort of kind of introductory and sort of preliminary, because at least for Linda and me, don't have a background in this type of this material, so it was a little more introductory.
Eric, we want to thank you so much for your time and for your input and, oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question. I'm not sure if it's to Eric or Director Austin. Is there going to be anyone looking at the similar reports of the other area libraries? Just so that we can compare ourselves and see how we're doing compared to our neighbors?
That's a great question. That was actually part of the research process. There wasn't a lot of structure that was provided to units of government in drafting this material. So, we, in library land, tend to share and compare a lot of our feedback with one another and help one another to complete our report. So, in the process of that and meeting with a number of my peer directors, this was a frequent topic of conversation. So, I did have the opportunity to preview some reports that had already been filed by other units of government in an effort to try to build on ours and make sure that we give true account for the ways that we make these standards. So, yes, I did review several of them, and I'm happy to say that we're fairly consistent or even exceed some efficiencies in that regard.
Great. And I'd just like to, we did have, Linda Dykman was unable to attend this evening, but she sent a note that said, directed to Director Austin. She said, "I enjoyed being a part of the Committee on Local Government Efficiency. While I considered myself well-informed on library activities, I was surprised and impressed by the sheer number of opportunities the library undertakes to support local agencies. It was clear to me that the library provides a significant value to the community through these efficiencies." So, your input's similar, and thank you again. Thank you, Director Austin. I think the report was excellent and made me so impressed by things that while I knew, but when you see a whole compilation, was very gratifying. And I think every resident will definitely should be reading this. And will this be posted on our website?
Yes.
Great. So, I think they'll be very proud and impressed by the work that we do in collaboration with so many other outside users. Any other trustees?
Are we expecting any feedback from the state? Or, you know, whoever this is going to?
Where it goes?
Yeah. Or is it kind of like, if you have it on file, that's?
I would, you know, I have a lot to say about that, and I'm not going to say a lot. From what I've heard, this is a document that goes into a drawer. But, as President Fishman just said, I do think that this is a valuable resource that I think we should make available to the public. So, upon approval this evening, we will add this to the Budget and Planning Documents page on our website, because I do believe that it demonstrates a lot of the ways that we are working to promote efficiencies, particularly on the financial end of things through the partnerships that we have with other government agencies.
Agreed.
Director Austin, in the, on the last page, on the "What Can We Do Better?" section, the first bullet says, "Continue to seek out more partnerships and alliances." Any thoughts on what that might look like or thoughts on where we might continue to develop partnerships?
There's opportunity to grow always, so it could just be within the existing partnerships that we have, leveraging the relationships that we have. We've done more turning outward as a staff in recent times through our Community Engagement Committee, so I imagine that there are going to be more opportunities that will be presented there. We've been trying for some time to grow our relationship with Newtshire High School, and there's evidence of that in my report this month, and I think that there's new opportunity there as well. I introduced myself to the new superintendent, who will take his position in June, so I'm hoping for an opportunity to build that relationship as well. So, we're looking for all those opportunities.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, may we have a motion, please, to approve?
I move approval of the Decennial Local Government Efficiency Committee's report for compliance with the Local Government Efficiency Act as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second that. All right, thank you. The motion has been brought forward by Trustee Senate and seconded by Trustee Nealon. So, thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed. We'll now move on to our next action item, and that is review and approval of the draft ordinance number... I'm sorry. Yes, yes, of the draft, of the, let's try again. Okay. Of the audit report. The Audit Manager, Joel London, for Lauterbach and Eamon, presented the Independent Auditor's Report at the October 15 regular meeting, providing an overview of the 2324 Annual Financial Report and its findings. Some figures in the draft report were subsequently corrected, leading to this final review. The Approval Audit Report will be published on our website. And Trustee Summer? Would you like to speak to this, please?
After several back and forth, some prodding from Director Austin to the auditor, they have corrected all the, there were minor errors, but they have corrected them all, and it looks like everything is appropriate now. You checked it, I checked it. I believe we are good now.
Thank you for your diligence on that.
So, I think we can, to anybody have any questions? Anybody further, any more minor errors? Probably not. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the annual financial report as prepared by the Independent Auditors?
I move approval of fiscal year 2023-2024 annual financial report as prepared by Independent Auditors Lauterbach and Eamon as presented.
I second.
Okay. The motion, thank you, has been brought forward by Trustee O'Keefe and seconded by Trustee Summer. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed.
I'd like to make one comment. I'd like to thank you for staying on top, consistently pestering them to get them. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for your support. It was a team effort.
It was a team effort.
Next, action item C is review and approval of the draft ordinance, 2024, now I'm correct, 25-213, an ordinance on levying taxes for library purposes for the fiscal year 2425 for the total of $6,573,818. Introductory information, historical data, and long-range financial planning scenarios from the October 2 Finance Committee meeting are appended to this attachment. The deadline for filing the levy ordinance with the county clerk is the last Tuesday in December. And once again, Trustee Summer and Trustee and Director Austin, excuse me, can you speak to this? Thank you.
I can start it. The levy is basically, as of, in October, we had a discussion with the whole group. We discussed it at the board meeting last time. We briefly talked about it in the other finance committee meeting in November. There have been no changes. I do want to just make one comment. In regard to the levy documents, we're very grateful for Mr. Kim's assistance with his financial projections. In the document included with the board meeting with the financial, the financial projection is a guide and should be used as such. In the amounts for the current year, fiscal year '25, there's an error in the general fund property revenue. It should be $5,677,700, and therefore, the budgeted deficit is understated. However, this discrepancy doesn't change the recommendation of the Finance Committee, and that's why I also mentioned it's just a guide, just to start. Anything else you'd like to add, Director Austin?
Just as a point of clarification, that, that little error is on the, the long-range financial model. It's not in the ordinance document itself. So the ordinance document remains unchanged as from what we've seen at the prior board meeting.
Does anybody have any questions or discussion about the levy? Thoughts?
I also just want to say that Mr. Kim's, the analysis has been so helpful to kind of understand long-term planning. So again, just thanks for engaging with him.
I think his guidance and input have been very well important to us. So very helpful. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of ordinance number 2024/25-213, an ordinance levying taxes for library purposes for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 for a total of $6,573,818 as presented.
I second. Thank you. The motion has been brought forward by Trustee Di Lorenzo and seconded by Trustee Summer. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. Motion passed. Moving on then, we have, our next is the Instructions Resolution 2024/25217, Instructions to the Cook County Clerk Regarding Willmet Public Library District's 2024-25 Levy. Anything else to say about this?
I mean, the purpose of the resolution is that once the property tax limitation law is applied to our levy, we are instructing the Cook County Clerk to leave, to apply that only to the corporate fund and to leave the other special funds, that being the Social Security, IMRAF, audit and liability funds untouched. We're levying a specific number there for a purpose, for budgetary purposes. So any limitation will be applied to the larger portion of the budget. And this is a standard resolution procedure that we do with the levy each year.
And the word corporate rather than general fund, that's just the language that is normally used in such a, such an instruction, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, moving forward then, may we have a motion to approve?
I can do it. I move approval of the Resolution Number 2024/25-217, Instructions to the Cook County Clerk Regarding Willmet Public Library District's Fiscal Year 2425 Levy as presented.
I second. I said that was so. Trustee Senate was the second? Thank you. Thank you. We now have a motion from Trustee Summer and seconded by Trustee Senate. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. Motion passed. We now will move on to our Libraries of Illinois Risk Agency, LIRA. And I'll have Director Austin.
Okay, thank you. As outlined in the Local Government Efficiency Act report, one of the other units of government that Willmet Library participates in in an effort to try to save costs for the library is to participate in an insurance pool for our property casualty and workers' compensation insurance. And we have been with the Libraries of Illinois Risk Agency, AKA LIRA, since 2017. And there is an overview of what LIRA is and the benefits of the insurance pool that are appended to the pricing sheet in the packet. I won't get into that too much, but what I will say is that while we were having our Finance Committee meeting on November 14th, our Finance Manager, Sandra Decepolo, was at the LIRA Annual Meeting where the renewal information was presented. And we learned at that time what our renewal costs would be. You'll see on our sheet that there is a 15% increase in our insurance this year. This is consistent with what everyone else in the room was getting for their pricing at that meeting. It has been described as a hard market for liability insurance right now, particularly in the category of the excess property, which is where we saw one of the larger jumps for our agency. What they're saying is that this, the, the rising costs for insurance really have to do with other outside factors on the insurance industry and not specifically what's happening within the insurance pool itself. Does anyone here work in insurance? Okay. You all might be able to better speak to that. But basically, what we're being told is that there are far more claims that exist outside of even our local area, that with the changes in weather, that there are more, that there's more damage to buildings, that there are more exposures in our culture today. That said, our cyber insurance remains effectively the same price as it was the previous year. And there are a number of other crisis programs that they're offering to us as well that are just part and parcel of being part of a, a, a public body in this day and age. That Crisis Protect Insurance relates to our bomb coverage, which as you know, this past year, we had a series of bomb threats. So it's, it's an interesting environment to be in a public enterprise. That said, we do need to have this insurance coverage. And we can't control just how expensive this gets when this is basically what we're being offered. That said, as a matter of procedure, and what I've told you I would do this year, is that I have compared our insurance costs with those of some of our peers who are not part of the pool so that we have an idea of the target expenses for this. And what I can say is that the pricing and the coverage that we're receiving here really truly are rock bottom, what I would expect for us to receive. I do believe that we're getting a real good benefit by being a participant in this insurance pool. I also wanted to note that there are two benefits to us being in this pool. That each year, there is a loss fund that the, the governing board of the pool, which is comprised of other library members, will vote to make a decision for how those funds will be allocated. This year, the funds were allocated to provide every agency with an appraisal report that shows what our, what our actual building property would be worth. And we have not had an appraisal report done for the library in the past decade. So that was a very useful exercise. And I was very pleased to have that report provided for us and that service administered by LIRA. The other advantage of that loss fund is that if the libraries that are part of the pool do not have as much insurance experience in the, in the year, that they will be offered a rebate on their expenses. And having been a member of the pool now for over seven years, we expect that we'll soon start to see some, some kickbacks from that because we have not had any experience, knock wood. So that said, I feel like this is a very valuable relationship that we have. I think it demonstrates our efficiency. And we continue to be satisfied with the service that we're getting and the leverage that we have for this group that does our bidding for us and gets the best possible coverage for us. Do you all have any questions for me about what's in the report or what the costs are?
Any sense, when you say rebate, which is nice to hear? Any concept or any idea what that means?
So I haven't seen it since I've been here at Willmet. But when I was one of the original members, when I was at Palatine Library, we, we joined LIRA when it first began. In our fifth year, having had no liability experience, we did get a, we got a small rebate. I would say that it was probably about $5,000. So it's not a huge, a huge amount. But that said, it's a pretty, it's a pretty significant one. Hey, I'll take a rebate.
And is that normally applied to the next year's renewal?
Yeah.
I'm just going to make, knowing how much my homeowners went up, which is about 30%, 15% seems pretty good.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Important. You hate to put the money out, but you gotta have it. So, gotta have it. So, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the Libraries of Illinois Risk Agency, LIRA, renewal of property slash casualty and workers' compensation insurance for December 31, 2024 through December 31, 2025 for $65,428 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Motion has been brought forward by Trustee Cox and seconded by Trustee Nealon. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. Motion passed. And finally, our last action item is kind of an easy one, but it is cancellation of our December 2024 regular board meeting, which is, we have a history of having a little time off for, in December. And the meeting is scheduled for, normally scheduled, Tuesday, December 17, 2024. And if canceled, then our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January 21, 2025. So this is tradition. And it's, we'll go with that. And it's, there's really not much to discuss at that next, in the December meeting. So I will move to cancel the Tuesday, December 17, 2024, regular board meeting and to resume the board's regular business with the Tuesday, January 21, 2025, regular meeting. Is there a second, please?
I second.
All right, great. Motion has been brought forward by Trustee Fishman and seconded by Trustee Summer. May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. Motion passed. Moving on now to our discussion items. And we'll turn this over to Director Austin.
Okay.
To unpack all this.
All right. So our, our discussion item this evening is an update on the Strategic Facilities Plan Final Project Report. In the packet, I've got a, a brief preamble that kind of gives you a step-by-step overview of where we've been on this process this year. And I will spare you a lot of that detail, but I will give you just a brief overview of what that says in the report. And the report is followed by our architect's summary document. So for nearly a decade, the library has been maintaining a special reserve fund plan, which includes a specific item in it targeting the renovation of the first floor and the lower level of the library. And in going through our strategic planning process in 2022 through our community engagement, we had a series of surveys where we solicited feedback from the public specifically about the spaces inside of our library building. And based upon the, the, the survey information that we collected in 2022, we collected that feedback, evaluated it, and added line items to our strategic plan in 2023 to revitalize and reimagine the first floor and lower level of the library, beginning with an initiative in fiscal year 2324 to complete a responsive space needs assessment to inform and establish priorities for service design and capital planning. And so that specific initiative is what led us to engage with Inver Anderson Architects and our architect, Joe Huberty, who we began working with in late 2023 to begin the strategic facility plan process, which is what he calls the space needs assessment. Joe Huberty is, is known to us. He's worked on a number of our projects before. He joined Willmet Library in 2020 and did our first capital reserve study, which effectively has been incorporated into Andrew Kim's Long Range Financial Planning Document, effectively creating 20 years of capital outlay for specific elements in our, in our building plan. As we noted earlier, one of those elements was our, was our sump pump. We were anticipating that we would be replacing that in two years, but it failed. But it was very helpful to have that tool in there to tell us kind of what we think the life of that system would be so that we could plan ahead. So Joe helped us put all that, those plans together. Joe was also instrumental in the wake of that capital reserve study in creating our 2021 Capital Repairs Project, which was the, how we addressed the priority needs that were identified in that capital reserve study. So that was the project where we effectively pulled all of the cloth wire out of the building. But anyway, leveraging his intimate knowledge of the library that he gained through inventorying every asset in this building, we thought that he was uniquely positioned to do a deep study of the library in an effort to try to help us to reimagine and revitalize our spaces. So with that, he presented his strategic facility plan project proposal at the January 2024 board meeting, and we approved it at that meeting. And we began staff engagement at our Staff Development Day program in April of this year, where 80 of our staff members participated in this room in sharing feedback about their experience about the building, as well as reflecting upon the feedback that they've received from the public over a number of years in ways that we can improve our building spaces. Having collected and reviewed that feedback, which was very ambitious, and there was a lot of information that we gathered there, the core team, which was comprised of all of the managers on the first floor of the library, as well as our building manager, myself, and our president and vice president, Fishman and O'Keefe, participated in the core team. And as the core team, we met several times to identify what our priorities were for this project. And in doing so, we very quickly realized that our ambitions for Willmet Library and the community's aspirations for our building would far exceed the budget that we had set aside for this project in our special reserve fund. Because we had budgeted approximately $3 million for this project in our long-range plan, it was the goal of the core team to work with the architect to design a plan that would effectively fall within that budget of $3 million. We began prioritizing what our strategies were and what our approach and scope was going to be for the project, which was primarily to address the key elements that would produce the greatest benefit to everyone on both floors of the library. And by doing that, in July, Joe came up with a plan for us that we discussed. And eventually, we brought our construction manager into the process to evaluate the proposal that we had received from our architect. And when the construction manager got his hands on it and went through it and started to take inventory of the scope of the project, very quickly, he began to realize that the pricing that he had on some of his more recent projects that he had worked with were looking very different than what the architect had. In fact, the construction manager's estimate was that the project that we were developing at $3 million would bid for approximately $6 million. Obviously, that was a shock to everyone at the table. Because of that, we were in a bit of a tailspin. We had this goal, we had these ideas, we had these aspirations, but we only have $6 million in the special reserve fund. And the dollars that we were estimating some 10 years ago were not adjusted for inflation and didn't quite account for the ways that we would be surprised today with how they would be presented. So recognizing that we were engaged with our architect for a very specific timeline that he had established for us back in January after we had engaged with him on this process, in an effort to build consensus around the goals of what the project design might look like, we were anticipating that we would be at this meeting tonight reviewing a plan to move our project forward. And that approving a concept, we would then have our architect, over the holidays, be designing this plan for us. And that we would be reviewing and approving that proposal and sending that information out to bid likely sometime in the spring, accepting those bids around that time and then potentially breaking ground on a project sometime in the summer. Recognizing that that was an impossible prospect to make those decisions with such a shocking budget discovery that we had in that timeframe, the architect and I decided, what if we just targeted some opportunity to strategize the best of the best? Just target a couple specific elements of this project that would open the possibility for us to do something both now as well as open possibilities in the future. It was a long shot, and it ultimately resulted in more questions than answers. And ultimately, we decided recently that we were going to receive the report that we have in hand this evening in your packet and that we are going to use the tools that we've received from our architect to do some more internal evaluation to see how we might be able to operationalize some of these suggestions that are listed in, in his report, to continue with some of the work that we've already been doing this year, and to build a plan financially for how we might be able to implement some sort of renovation of our spaces at some point down the line when we have a better handle on our long-range financial commitments. So the information that you have in your packet is an incredibly valuable report. And I think that our architect has done a tremendous job in doing a deep dive and study of our library and the unique situation that our warren of multiple additions and renovations over the years has presented us with today here in the 21st century. So effectively, what Joe has done with his report is that he has provided. Joe has done with his report is that he has provided us with a very broad view of what Willmet Library does, what it does well, and also recognizing that there are a number of challenges with the way that the building is laid out as it stands today. He took his kind of disinterested, you know, outsider perspective to take a look at how we might better align all of our resources. What if we aligned our collections a little bit more? What if we aligned our staffing spaces in a different way? How might we improve wayfinding? How might we improve the safety of our spaces, the visibility, the lighting, et cetera? How do we prepare for the future? If we recognize that we've only got so many dollars set aside in our long-range plan, and that we may only be able to accomplish one or two very strategic changes to this building with our, our reserves today, how can we make sure that we, that those changes are going to have the maximum impact on our community and organization, recognizing that the role of the library may change radically over the course of the next decade or more? A lot of questions and a lot of challenge. And I think it's going to take more intentionality and self-study in order for us to get to a place where we feel like we can make a firm recommendation of where we would like to go from here. As part of Joe's plan, he also looked at our community and the way that our community is using our spaces. We have a very uniquely shaped community. We're kind of long and narrow, and a good portion of our district extends west of 41. And are there opportunities? He, he took a, a large section of his report to explain opportunities that we may, may not be meeting the needs of our western portion of the district. We were using some of our circulation data to recognize that some of our patrons on the west side of our district may not necessarily have business on this end of town, and they're using other libraries, like the Winnetka and Glenview libraries, to get their library services, even though we have a footprint there with our book drop at the Community Rec Center. He also did a comparative analysis of our collections and services to some of our peers and benchmarked our statistics against some of our, of our partner agencies. And by doing that, collectively as a staff, our collection team has been looking at ways that we can better present and display our materials so that they can better reach their users, but also to right-size our collections and present them in a way that's more attractive. And we've already been doing that for a couple of years. But Joe's data, and in comparison to 16 peers, it was really evident that there's still some ground for us to cover to meet those goals. That's kind of a, a broad overview of the content of the report, but there's over 150 pages there for us to review, and some very compelling graphics, and some concept drawings, as well as some renderings about what a, a future space in the library might look like. So I will pause there and see if the trustees have any feedback to provide on that information.
Well, I think what he did was very valuable, even though at this point, I agree with you, we're not, can't, we haven't found the ideal plan. And we, certainly, the first plan was a shock when we got the dollar amount. And I do appreciate the pause we've taken to kind of sit back, look at what we do have, and perhaps pick and choose those things that really will best give us the bang for the buck. And I think we have a lot of the tools already to start that. So I think it was money well spent.
Well, I think, I'll echo that and want to thank all the parties involved, certainly the staff and the core team, and everybody putting their heads together and just trying to make our library everything that we would like it to be. And, but given the constraints of the board feeling that we have to go back and review and really make it what we want it to be and not feel, and take that pause, not feel rushed. And I think while even though so many great ideas and, and opportunities, but like everything else, you really have to be sure that it's, it's spending public money in the right fashion and taking the time to review what we, what we have and where we're going from here. So I think it was a hard decision for everyone to really do that soul searching. But again, the staff has been wonderful to be supportive of what we've talked about. And moving forward, I think we'll, we'll find some happy medium. So, but thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I don't think the time or the intention has been wasted. I think everything that was spent financially or time-wise and energy-wise by staff, by administration, by our service providers, will get us to the next step. And then we will be very intentional with a project. And I greatly appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Anthony, with Director Austin, we'll keep you from talking, and we'll have your director's report now.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So my report is in the packet, and I will not so succinctly summarize it, I guess. I've got a few things that I've prepared that I want to share with you. But I will try to briefly go over everything that I'd like to cover with you. There's so much happening. I'll start, just kind of go right through the report from start to finish. We've got a great narrative overview of the shelving and welcome desk team this month from Patsy Devono, including the demonstrated benefit of our recent automation efficiencies with the Automated Material Handling System, which was evidenced by the recent CCS downtime at the end of September and early October. So she's really provided you with a good picture of what that team does. Technical Services Team continues to work to support library-wide efforts to analyze and maintain our collections. You'll also note that staff has behind the scenes been working on some customer-forward services to secure in-demand items when our traditional vendors can't meet our usual, usual expectations for turnaround. And on a, a related note, it bears mention that, and reminder that our TS team continues to impress me with their effective and efficient operations sustaining little-to-no backlog of materials despite a steady flow of new material in, old materials out, and multiple concurrent improvement projects ongoing. Technical Services is kind of that unsung team that kind of works behind the scenes, and a lot of folks don't understand what they do. We've got a real dynamite team, and they do a great job. So I want to make sure that they get props. On the digital services side of things, our DMS manager, Lauren Kelly, serves on the Board of the Electronic Content Consortium, which provides the base operations of the Digital Library of Illinois' Overdrive content, which patrons across the state know through the Libby app. So if you know Libby, you can thank Lauren for that. Lauren has just taken a new role with that consortium and is going to be serving as the hold selector, helping to maintain and manage overall wait times and sustained access to in-demand items. So we're really excited for Lauren helping us with that. And I wanted to report to you that locally, Overdrive circulation accounts for over 25% of our total circulation. So still great trending in statistics for our digital collections locally. Last month, physical circulation saw our strongest October in the past five years with nearly 60,000 items circulating. Briefly moving through, our adult and teen service team continues to build strong relationships with our chamber and local business partners, as well as with Nutria High School. The first batch of our local history newspaper digitization project, which is continuing this year after several years on pause, were completed this month, and the local history database remains the library's strongest performing digital resource. This month, the Local History and Genealogy Librarian Eva Johnson was elected vice chair of the Illinois State Historical Records Board. So we're really happy to have a number of our staff getting recognized at the state level for their contributions and participation. Youth Services continues to provide extraordinary programming, hosting 70 programs with nearly 1,900 patrons participating. And a couple of those programs, one of them, on October 18th, our community engagement librarian, Sarah Joza-Harako, and school engagement librarian, Etti Berlin, presented a program here in this auditorium, "I Hate Politics: How to Explain to Kids and Ourselves Why Civic Engagement Matters," which is a Between the Lines program that was hosted in partnership with the District 39 PTAs and PTOs. Sarah Jo moderated a panel discussion with Village Board President Senta Plunkett, Library Board Secretary Maria Di Lorenzo, civics teacher Michael Pond, and legal women voters Willmet President Kristin Stadheim. Panelists talked about the importance of empathy in social discourse and political engagement, what adults can learn from kids about finding common ground, and how we can make civic processes meaningful to students. At the same time, a civics program for children four and up was offered in our youth program room. And in an effort to engage kids and caregivers in conversations about voting and encourage voter participation, Youth Services created a passive program where children could vote for dragons or unicorns, exploring library resources about magical creatures, and get an "I vote" sticker, or "I voted" sticker, and to explore other voting activities and coloring pages. Voting and voter engagement was a big part of what we did in the library in, in the, the month of October and early November. So we were all kind of involved in that, but really happy to see the partnership that you've had, and particularly with that awesome program here on the 18th. We had a number of other partner programs throughout the month. We partnered with the Alliance for Early Childhood on a series of five after-school events promoting process-based imaginative play. There's really great graphics in the report about that. And on October 27th, we continued to host a group of teens from the North Suburban Special Recreation Association. I also wanted to share that as part of her role in LECONI, the Library Administrators Conference of Northern Illinois, community engagement librarian Sarah Joza-Harako coordinated and hosted a special event for regional library professionals two weeks ago at Evanston Public Library. The program is called Serving Patrons with Unique Circumstances: Social Work in Libraries. And it was a full-day program featuring a keynote from Rob Simmons, the Social Services and Public Safety Director at Oak Park Public Library, who discussed building community connections to support patrons in need. Panels included discussions of the value of library full-time social workers, as well as the benefit of library partnerships with universities to provide internship opportunities for social work students. Two of our staff attended that event along with Sarah Jo, and we're really proud of the service that Sarah Jo did in promoting that program for us all. Digital Maker Services was especially busy in the studio this past month with all kinds of creative seasonal projects, as evidenced in their report. And they also implemented a new window decal, inviting patrons to wonder, what can you make, and showcasing a range of creative projects that were made with our own equipment and resources, and those possibilities are endless. We're also really happy that Ethan and Alex from that team developed and launched two staff training programs that were aimed to demonstrate the role and possibilities of artificial intelligence as part of a lunch-and-learn training for staff. The Communications and Event Team created and delivered the November/December newsletter, which is circulating around here. And Sarah Beth Brown also finished a major project with the completion of the Library Style and Branding Guide, which was an initiative of our strategic plan. This tool is going to be rolled out to staff over the course of the next few months, and will help to ensure compliance and understanding from staff at all levels. We're really excited to debut this tool, which will help us to create more uniformity and cohesion in our outward-facing communications. Internally, we're working on a couple strategic plan initiatives as well, including our computer replacement project, which is in development right now. Staff will be developing a training program and a set of videos that we're going to set out for our new office productivity software, Microsoft 365, as well as launching our new computer systems and hardware. The final software, imaging, configuration, installation, and training is going to be following in the next few weeks, and we expect that the new public computers are going to be deployed sometime in the middle of December, and that the staff computers and software will, will be deployed sometime probably in late January, after we've been able to implement all the training. From the recruiting and personnel side of things, we had some activity this month by hiring a few new staff. We hired Susan Carroll as a new substitute circulation assistant. We also hired James Newman as a new part-time digital services assistant. And we looked internally to create an opportunity for Rachel Rothie to transfer from her current part-time circulation assistant position to be a part-time adult services librarian. Rachel just got her MLS this past spring, and we're really excited to welcome her aboard the adult services team. And that will conclude my report for right now. Do you have any questions for me about anything from my report?
I just want to make one comment. I'd like to compliment the security or staff. I, I volunteered on a books down under, and there was a patron in there one day who had some special needs but was by themselves, didn't know them, and they were, anyway, so I called up there. They came down incredibly professional, knew the patron, just, I just loved the way that they treated the patron, knew kind of who they were, what their scenario was. So please pass the line. I think it was Al.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about library operations?
I have another question.
Okay.
So is it typical that you have like 25,000 exceptions out of the 68? That's about almost 40%. It's pretty high.
Well, I guess the definition is what is an exception. So exceptions are items that require additional handling. So the Automated Material Handling System will process, say, for example, the disc media. And let's say you check out an audiobook, and you're one of the few people who checks out CD books, you will know that there are 30 CDs in that package. And you've returned that item, and the machine will run it through, but it will pass it off at the end as an exception because staff will need to go back through and make sure that all 30 of the exact discs that belong in that case are there. Sometimes a disc gets left behind. Sometimes a patron's disc ends up in there as well, and that is why we give a double check to some of the items that have special handling. The Library of Things would be another kind of thing that is deemed an exception. Items that may require a little bit of extra inventory or special handling are considered an exception. 40% is kind of average for what we have to process. And when you factor in what percent of our media requires that kind of detail, it, it kind of adds up. But the automation certainly helps because 60% of the items that go through do not require the repetitive motion of the open-close and all that sort of handling. They can just go right on the carts and get shut. Yep.
I loved seeing that the, the librarians had reached out to Nutria, and that they had become involved with some book clubs, and also all the outreach to all of the parochial and D39 schools. So bravo on that.
Thank you. It's a work in progress.
And did I notice that circulation, it said monthly circulation stats went up from a previous month by nearly 15,000. Fabulous.
Yeah. It was, it was a pretty remarkable jump for us, and as I said, the, the strongest October that we've had in the past five years. I think a little bit of that has to do with the fact that CCS had their migration, and we welcomed the two new libraries at the end of September, early October. And therefore, there were some additional items that got processed early in October that might have ordinarily been processed in September. But we'll take it.
We'll take it. Fabulous. Makes our stats look, and very strong. Nice. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Moving on to our committee reports, anything, trustee Nealon?
I have no updates as well.
Director Austin?
No update.
Okay. We've got a comments circulating, any of our suggestion box and so forth. And just to note, our holiday hours for 2024, for Thanksgiving, the library will close at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 27, and remain closed on Thursday, November 28. So Christmas, the library will be closed Tuesday, December 24, and Wednesday, December 25. New Year's, the library will be closed Tuesday, the 31st, and Wednesday, the 1st. So make note of that. Get everything you need before we're closed, but then you've got Libby and eBooks. Anything else? Any new business?
No new business.
Okay.
I've got one item that I'd like to share with you all. So we have three seats on the seven-member Library Board of Trustees that will be open for the Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, local consolidated election. And all of those seats will be for four, full four-year terms, expiring in April of '29. We posted this on our agenda for the last couple meetings. And the filing period for those petitions ended yesterday. So I wanted to share this information with you, as I believe the local paper is going to be publishing this information, and I wanted to share it with you all here this evening. So the completed nomination papers were filed by candidates at the library over the course of the past week, November 12 through, ended day Monday, November 18. And at end of day yesterday, the library had received three sets of nomination papers for the three seats. And they, these are from the following district residents, Eric Beederman, Jennifer Mullman, and Matthew Pascoe. And two of those potential candidates are right here in the room this evening. So I want to thank you for your interest in serving the library board, and happy to share that information with you all.
Excellent. Thank you. Wonderful. Now we have adjournment, and it is 7:31. May we have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I moved that the board adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. 7:31. Thank you, seven thirty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agreed. Motion passed and meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you to our attendees.